Please stand for the pledge. Cecily, roll call please.
Councillor Gorley.
Here.
Councillor Richards. Councillor Sanchez. Councillor Thorstad.
Here.
Councillor Trask.
Here.
President Proton Mallard. Mayor Coleman.
Present. Let the record show that we have five present and two absent. Moving on. We're going to start this work session. And on council rules, that's part of our council goals. So to discuss these, so go ahead and open us up, kick us off.
Okay, well do. Couple reminders just about our microphones because they're awkward. And we're going to be kind of walking around a little bit. Particularly like Cecily and I, so if you all can make sure to speak directly into the microphones, we'll be able to take minutes a lot more easily. And also, if you have them over to the side, we get feedback. So try to keep them directly in front of you as best you can. So that's it when it comes to the microphones. So we'll get started on this particular piece. As Mayor Coleman mentioned, we, this is a request of council for us to bring this forward for you all to do a workshop on and work through. And talk about any potential changes that you want to see to the council rules. In front of you, you all should have the City of Sweet Home Council rules. So that you can go ahead and reference and look at any areas. We also printed off a few copies of different other council rules. You don't have to read them all through right now, but there's a few different cities that you have available. You also have the LOC municipal handbook as well. There's a lot of cities that have decided to mostly adopt that with a few modifications and so forth. And we also have a few things that are various examples, such as the Code of Conduct models and examples. This is some generic Code of Conduct examples that are also often called norms. And there's also some things like the City of McMinnville, for example, has something along the lines of a city council group agreement that they recommend that besides the larger council goals, it's a smaller piece that everybody on council agrees to adhere to. So we'll talk about a little, these a little bit more as it comes about. But these are just some things for you all to kind of leaf through to get some inspiration. And to also just see what else is out there. There's, I also included the Institute for Local Government that talked about attributes of exceptional councils. And it talks about, you know, some of the roles and responsibilities and so forth too. So if you all want to take a couple of minutes and read through it, feel free. Otherwise, we can go ahead and get started with our brainstorming sessions. The way that we're planning on doing this is we're going to just talk high level on what type of goals you would want, any changes to the council rules to have. And then we can talk about specifics and then you all can talk about norms. And if we need to modify this a little bit, we absolutely can. It is a workshop, so we are recording it, but that's mostly for minutes and so forth. Public is allowed, but it's, it's a work session. So it's a little bit more informal. So I'll give you all a couple of minutes and then we'll go ahead and get started. Do you all want a couple more minutes to read through or do you want to start?
You can get started.
Brainstorming. Okay. And there's, there's more around and if you all want to take another break or anything, I mean, do you all just direct this? This is something you all requested and, and we're trying to just do it for you as best we can facilitate it. So we'll get started with goals. And Cecily's going to write some things. I might join her because I'm not good at sitting still. Or I might stay here because it's easier to hear me. Oh, 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 we have a microphone. Okay, this is cool. We need to start doing like, yay, you made it.
Welcome.
You just start. So councillor Sanchez, we are about to start brainstorming some basic goals on what we're hoping. One of the things that we're requesting is please speak into the microphone as much as possible. Otherwise, we get feedback and we don't get proper minutes. So, but we're going to start brainstorming the goals on what you all would like to see in a revised council rules. And just, we're going to start with very high level type of goals that you all would want to see in these council roles. So, and I have a microphone, so I get to walk around, which makes me really happy. We're going to just start doing all council meetings like this. And so any goals that anyone want to start us off? Something that's not in our council rules now or something that you want clarified?
Code of Conduct.
Code of Conduct? Great.
Think it'd be helpful to have like clear ethical boundaries or guidelines to just ensure integrity. Because I think there's some confusion on the other ones, our current ones.
Oh, I caught another one.
Excellent.
Social media policy.
Okay. Social media policy.
I'm just going off those other cities. So we're just going to go down the list.
You have examples for a reason.
If I may, do you hear me?
Yes.
I would like to make sure that we get any attendance.
Attendance?
Yes.
Okay.
Maybe an avenue for accountability.
Should we have a short cookie break?
Maybe so.
I think we should have something for new councillors, kind of like a broad scope of what's required of councillor.
Beyond like the council handbook?
Yeah, just a little bit. We could touch on it maybe.
Okay, yeah, let's talk about that. So something having to do with new councillors.
Yeah.
Okay.
See that your attributes of an exceptional council and sources of law are something that would be included in that training. Because councillors that come onboard don't always know how to work within the scope of the law as a councillor. And then how to be a good councillor.
What about including? For example, since, since we're just looking at those, Grants Pass has something where they have like a, so you're considering being a council member. So it's not even necessarily before anybody even starts. And it goes through all of the laws and rules and all of that and so forth. Would anything like that be an interesting goal? Like additional pre-training or anything?
Yeah, write that down. I like that.
Okay.
I also really like McMinnville's example.
So a council agreement?
A council agreement.
Okay, cool.
If I may, I would require, not require, but I would let new councillors go, they go to the League of Oregon Cities and listen to that stuff that they put together and they're really good. And they'll give you some ideas of the way it is and the way it should be and how you can help yourself and the councillor and the city and everything. That's, that's a, I've been there twice and it's pretty good.
Would you, are you suggesting like a required training?
No, no, not required, but just if they can put that on there somehow.
Okay. Councillor training? Okay, any more goals? We can always come back too. If we want. Or are you feeling, okay. All right, just cool. So what I'm hearing is trying to have a better defined code of conduct. Clearer and better defined ethical guidelines. A social media policy that defines, you know, what social media requirements there are. Some sort of attendance policy, accountability. Does that include steps taken if there, if these rules are not followed? Or it, does it include what specific rules need to be followed or both?
I would say the first, what you said.
Okay. Okay, cool. And then some sort of new councillor guide. And definitely, and we've brought this up a few times, some additional councillor training opportunities and so forth. I do want to point out that we have the handbook that gets put out. And we do offer the LOC training. And there's even some other trainings that have been, that are offered to council members. So I think something to consider is if we do want to require anything to be mandatory or so forth or not. I mean, that's obviously up to council to determine.
So do we have an updated rookie book for the new councillors? That all of that kind of information or how to be an effective local community leader? That, you know, high points through it would help that we could just give to them so that they could?
So we have, and what we, my understanding that has been provided is the councillor handbook, the councillor rules, the policy and procedure pieces, and all of the things that are listed on our website. So. And I can read through those if you want me to go over there. Or Angela, do you have that up right now?
I'm not sure that I was given a handbook or anything.
Yeah, I don't think I was either.
Yeah.
Are there other elements at Council Gorley you think would be helpful to be suit?
Well, you had another one in here that was code of conduct would be a good thing. But there's, I think as a, as a rookie councillor, there's some things that would help about their role on a committee. That kind of thing. What a executive session is, what a work session is, what the difference is. Those kind of things that new councillors, a lot of them have no background to even understand basic things, let alone like a cheat sheet for Robert's rules. You know, so that they would kind of understand that. Because it's, they're at a serious disadvantage if they don't know how things go. They want to serve, but they don't know what that looks like. And not everybody has any kind of background.
So maybe in that pre-training or, or in that, yeah, the council handbook or whatever, just to include a cheat sheet. I like the cheat sheet idea on differences between different type of meetings, but also committees. Yeah, and their role. Those things, I think some of that's included in there, but I think a quick reference guide.
There, there is a lot of it in there. So there is public hearing procedure, land use hearing, parliamentary procedures, council oath, code of ethics, council rules, procedural rules, Oregon government ethics laws, advisory boards, commissions and committees. There's resources and training connect, links on here. Sweet Home Charter is all on the website. Under the City Council Handbook.
Like I said, I don't think we came on, there was any.
Not, not when we came on, this was, this wasn't active when we came on, no.
Yeah. Did you, was that shared with you when you came onboard? Okay.
Good.
It's kind of like. Yeah.
Okay, so any other goals? Particularly for the council rules? Okay. Well, let's move over to specifics, but we need a different color. Okay, cool. Okay, so specifics is, is there, this is kind of where we can talk a little bit more about specific pieces. So like, for example, some of the things that you would want to see in a code of conduct. And would you want that directly in the council rules? Or would you want that as a standalone document? Or if there's an attendance policy, what exactly you're discussing there? Now, don't feel like we need to solve everything now. There's probably going to need to be another session. But we can see how far we want to go. If getting into the specifics, if we're not quite ready for that, the other thing that we can do, and I'm almost wondering if that would be a better idea, is to start with norms. And the norms would be behavior, general behavior that everyone can kind of agree to. That you would want to be, that you would want to make sure that the council is adhering to. So would you all like to start with specifics or would you like to go to norms? Is there any preference? We can also bounce back and forth if we need to. Okay. I like that too. As we're kind of talking it through, I think that's more where we're at right now. So let's start with some norms. So, and then I might move us around, say actually, you know, that let's put that over under specifics or let's put it under goals, depending on, on the various items. But you have some examples of code and conduct, which is often considered a norm in front of you. And, and then there's others out there as well. Those are just examples. So let's go ahead and start with that. Are there any norms that somebody would like to have?
Expectation that city councillors be supportive publicly of our city's activities and role. We can disagree all we want in here, but when we go out that door, we present a united base of positive energy because our people need that.
That's a great norm. So let's put that on. We can just put everything on and then we can move forward and vote on them once they're on there too. So, okay, any other norms? Councillor Thor said you're thinking of something.
Kind of like too vague, I think. But.
We can always.
Yes, I know.
Put it under specifics a little bit more.
Jobs don't allow that. Families, citizens don't allow that. But the intention to support as many as possible would be good. Even if we kind of divvy it up.
Sorry. Even if we have to kind of divvy it up, you know? A really common one is being prepared and reading agenda packets before a council meeting.
I think that's a great norm. It's really frustrating when people don't.
I'm going to start reading stuff off. Unless anybody else has others you want to add? Just one page.
I don't know if this is a norm or if this is a goal. But to be aware of our roles and our responsibilities, because I think that sometimes that gets confused. So, and sometimes it's really easy to get confused because some things overlap.
Okay, I'm going to read stuff off. And you'll have it in front of you too. If you want any of these, just mention it, we'll write them down. And demonstrate honesty and integrity in every action and statement.
Yes.
Inspire public confidence in our city government. Okay. Work for the common good.
With the first one that was mentioned, that's why there's, yeah, yeah.
Um, work for the common good, not personal interest?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm the only one that's going to speak up.
Okay, so we are a really quiet group. Is there other things?
I'm shocked on the lack of participation. That's just on the record.
As in?
Well, I'm shocked that we're trying to have a cookie cutter ideas, calling them norms when there's people that come in all different varieties. So this is pretty hard to sit through.
Okay, so norms, let me just define what that is. It, it's, norms are just typically things that a small group agrees on. That's the definition of what that means. So it's agreeing as a council, what type of, of sort of code of conduct you all want to adhere to. Okay. So. I'm going to be, I'm going to just ask, do you want to continue? Because staff is happy to go work on something else.
Well, I have a question.
Yeah.
So. Is there anything that's up there that's offensive that somebody thinks should be taken down?
I'm just concerned who, who gets to decide. So we can't go to a meeting preparation or a event or, I mean, so is this going to be weaponized against people who have other things on their schedules? Or, I mean, what's, what is the actual goal of this?
Setting up council rules is something that's, have already been established. And when we were sworn in on our first day as councillors, we agreed to follow council rules. So there's already rules that are established. So the goal here is to collaborate on what changes we would like to see in those council rules. And will they be weaponized? I don't know. Attend city events is rather general and that's a norm. But the specifics then would be clarifying whether or not we have an expectation of one another to attend a certain number of city events. And if that's a problem, then that's where we decide and we vote. Because this is just to hold each other accountable. It's for us, because we don't have outside of ethics commissions, anything that really holds us to our own standards. And having a standard is the only way to measure, measure whether or not we are living up to what we agreed to do as councillors.
And staff, we were asked. And staff, we were asked by the entire council, this was a council goal, for us to bring this forward to you all, which is the only reason we are. So we're trying to work through this. So all of this is brainstorming right now. So we can speak against any piece, we can dive into it further. It's an idea of seeing what you all want to see in the council goals moving forward. I mean, council rules, excuse me. So are there additional norms we want to put on? Do you all want to just adopt something like this? Do you have additional feelings or thoughts about this?
Our council rules are very vague. There is nothing to hold anything steady. It's just vague. And I think it needs to be adjusted for future and current.
Well, then let's move over to specifics for a little while and we can come back to norms if that works. And let's, let's go ahead and tackle some of those areas that you feel like are vague. And let's see what we can do over there. Let's get another color, because I need at least some. Okay, so specifics. So councillor Thorsten, if there's something specific you would like to see? Now, remember, just because they're going on the wall, we're brainstorming. We're going to come back and agree to these things. So anything can go on the wall. I mean, you can have that all of you get a million dollars a year. We don't have it, but you can put it on there. It wouldn't really be in council rules anyway. But nothing, nothing is concrete just because it goes up here. So I just want to make sure that we're working on brainstorming with the idea that we will come back and refine it and allow room for discussion. So don't be afraid to bring up ideas. Okay, so specifics.
There's a whole bunch of them over there, attendance.
Okay, so, but like, so you're looking for an attendance rule. So for example, there's a few different ways that that can be done. Right now, there is an attendance rule and it's that you cannot miss more than 60 days consecutively. And that, and that needs to be of unexcused absences. You could choose to do something like, what we have in our committees is what, three? Three consecutive absences? So if there's three consecutive absences, that's room for dismissal with the committee. You could also do something like six absences or five absences in a year. You could do anything along those lines. It's entirely up to you all on what you feel like is appropriate.
I think the absences, if there was going to be anything holding accountability, then they, they say three consecutive, would have to be three consecutive without the council vote for being excused. Right? Three unexcused absences. Because I think that makes a difference. If somebody has a tragedy in their family and they have to be out of state or something, three excused, three unexcused is different than three excused. Right? Or five in the year, if they're five unexcused, that's much more serious than five excused. So.
You hear me? If you, if all these meetings that we have are supposed to be here. And if we're not, it makes sense to me that if they can't make it here for a reasonable amount of times, then I think that that should be adjusted so that I'll give you, I'm not going to give you the example because you, all, all people that are here know. But I think that, I think that it shouldn't be. I think it should be more I think it'd be more strengths, strength in that. I think that, I think that if, if they're going to miss four or five in one month or two months, that doesn't make sense to me. That's what I would want on there anyway.
Okay, so I'm hearing two different things. Do we have anything specific that you guys want us to put up here? Was there one of like five in two months? Is that what I heard? Or?
Well, we can come up with a number.
Okay.
I mean, I don't care, but the council can make their call, but I think it's important that we show up.
So we could go either way, we could do the, have them be excused, or we could just do a general number throughout the year. There's this many missed throughout the year, then that's the expectation, no more than that. That would then, I think, address your concern, but then would it address your concern as well?
I don't know. I think the council's very thoughtful about excusing absences because, you know, they try really hard to be fair. But if somebody's pushed it to the point that they're starting to be unexcused and there's a number of them throughout the year, then that's a different scenario. And I think that has more weight in it. We do have people who work and we do have people who have family commitments. And I think the council themselves should have the ability to control that forgiveness, right? And if you put in hard numbers without the ability to have a mechanism for forgiveness, then you're putting yourself in a corner that you can't fix. And we want to be able to be thoughtful, because we're all traveling through this life together of jobs and families. And so as long as the council has the ability to navigate that, then I'm good with it.
Any other thoughts from other councillors? Councillor Thorsten?
It's tough to put a number, because you have lives and people could call in sick and stuff like that. So it's hard. I was hoping we'd get more input on that. So I don't know, have a number. Maybe we can revisit that one.
Okay, I think that works. If I can just remind everybody to try to speak into the mics as much as can, that'd be great. Um, okay, any other specifics?
Is there, I mean, somebody put up their social media policy. Is there a social media policy that we could just specifically copy and paste to ours?
Possibly. I mean, we could do, I mean, the Supreme Court just had some big decisions regarding social media, particularly regarding councillors and other public officials. So we could follow something along those lines and, and put that in if that would be of interest. Is there any other specifics you all would want to discuss?
Think goes along the social media and the public support of city activities and officials. That would be something that we would need to do.
Tie some of that content into the social.
Social media. Or, or it could even be that those are the norms that you all wanted to do and that would include all forms of communication, including social media. Yeah, and then we could also, because we do have our social media policy, but it doesn't, and it, it, it talks about having to keep all of anything that's posted regarding business, regardless of whether it's a personal account or, or a city account. Because anytime you discuss any business, it automatically becomes public record. So, but when it came to types of content that's being discussed as a councillor, I think it would come back to some of the like public support of city activities, which is also currently in our council rules. So we could just potentially clarify that a little bit.
So where does this get into the free speech First Amendment right to say whatever you want to say?
So I'm not a lawyer, I'm not going to pretend I am speaking to that. I am going to talk about what the Supreme Court already determined and then what the council rules discuss. And typically with council rules, I mean, people have the ability to speak, but it doesn't mean that there wouldn't necessarily be consequences. It would depend, it's the same as with any type of job or role following the general code of conduct. And, and part of the role of the councillor as according to the city council rules right now. Okay, and in what's being presented here would be continuing that public support.
Well, what if you don't support it? Well, can we read what's in the council rules right now?
I think that's a good idea.
Do you want, do you want me to read the representing the city?
Yes.
Number 23, representing the city. If a member of the council to include the mayor appears as a representative of the city before another governmental agency, the media or an organization to give a statement on an issue, the member may only state the official position of the city as approved by the majority of the council. Personal opinions, if a member of the council to include the mayor appears in their personal capacity before another governmental agency, the media or an organization to give a statement on an issue, the member must state that they are expressing their own opinion and not that, not that of the city before giving their statement. So city manager Young, can you just maybe summarize that, restate it?
Sure, there's also another section in our ethics that also states as, as being a council member that you would not, once the council has made a decision, you wouldn't go and speak against it. You would, could speak against it in that council meeting, but as a general ethical piece, you wouldn't speak against it. And that's in our ethics session, section. This particular piece talks about how if you are a councillor, you will speak, if you're speaking, or as a councillor, you would speak as a representative of the council and therefore would only say things that were in a unified manner after the council had made that decision. If you're speaking for the council or in a way that council agreed upon. If you're speaking on a personal matter, you would state, you know, this is not this city manager, like, or if I was councillor Young, this is not councillor Young speaking, this is Kelsey Young speaking and not in an official capacity. However, if you're speaking as Kelsey Young, not in a in, as a, an official capacity, but you're speaking to council business that you already spoke to as a councillor, it's implied that you're automatically speaking as a councillor.
Mayor, would you like me to read the ethics line?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Says, "All members of the council shall review and observe the requirements of state ethics law. In addition to complying with the state ethics law, all members of the council shall refrain from disclosing confidential information, taking action which benefits special interest groups or persons at the expense of the city as a whole, expressing an opinion contrary to the official position of the council without so, without so saying and conducting themselves in a manner so as to bring discredit upon the government of the city." And, yeah, maybe you could summarize that again, that part, that section.
Um, that means particularly when you are being a council member, staying professional, not disclosing anything confidential, being supportive of the city as a whole. And then if you are speaking against what council went for, this is an area that personally I think should be clarified further, that you are doing so and saying that the council voted for this. I voted against it. But overall, it's recommended that you try to speak in a unified voice for the benefit of the city.
The question was raised regarding First Amendment rights as far as speaking freely. And how does that tie in with the oath of office that is taken? That states that as a council, you support the city council code of conduct?
Well, that is the oath of office. I mean, in choosing to be a councillor, you are choosing to work for the good of the city. And one of the things that is discussed and that is considered to be best practices when you look at some of the other pieces is trying to do everything you can to lift the city up and to speak in as much of a unified voice as possible. It doesn't mean that you can't, it just means that you are creating dissension within the city council.
It's my understanding that on the local level like this, that people cannot differentiate on generally between you wearing your council hat or not wearing a council hat. You're always wearing your council hat and so you have a higher standard of behavior.
If I can speak to it too, just candidly as well, when, when you show a community a divided council, it often makes it harder to trust or to know who to look towards. That doesn't mean there shouldn't be disagreements and discussion, because there absolutely should. You should hear different opinions. But the area to do that and the typical place to do that is in the council meeting. And then once you have met, made that consensus, then you move together as a team and that helps create that trust in the community. One of the things that you'll also see happen when a council isn't necessarily doing that is you'll see a lot of additional conversations, additional concerns, people reaching out to city staff, you know, and just a lot of confusion. And what that often ends up doing is it costs a lot of money because it, staff has to spend so much time explaining what's going on, dealing with the phone calls and the additional pieces, that they're not able to focus on their work. And so that's another reason that it's important for council to be able to move forward is because when there's a lot of dissension, a lot of other conversations and so forth, you would be surprised at how much time that takes away from staff being able to complete tasks. And also how uncomfortable it makes staff and how challenging it becomes for city manager to be able to carry out the tasks that council presented to them. So it's, it's a big deal. So I would, that's something that council can choose not to do, but be aware that those will be the consequences as well.
Are there any specifics other councillors would like to address regarding the norms or the goals that have been put on the wall?
Okay, so I'm going to say another thing. We are having this workshop because it was requested. So, and this doesn't seem to be working. So is there something that council would prefer to see in order to do this goal and task that council presented to us? Or do you want me to just write what I think you all should do?
It's a great question, councillors. Would you rather discuss this here in the meeting? Or? Or, um, have City Manager Young write something up for us?
Or do you want to just let it rest? You know, not do anything, just keep it as is.
Three choices, discuss it in the meeting or have City Manager Young write something. Love to hear consensus. We can't take a vote, but we can have.
Can you use your microphone, please?
There it goes. Oh, keep it as is.
I would like to see something regarding attendance and social media. Uh, and maybe some examples that we could incorporate.
I would like to see, um, what counselor, um, just said and add to it, um, code of conduct, um, on the council and outside the council.
Are there specific guidelines? Sorry.
Yeah, we, we are held to a higher standard. We were elected by the people. We need to do better. And obviously everybody's happy with the way things are going right now. Um, but no one wants to say anything. Um, but attacking people in the city, doing things, um, I think needs to not happen.
So you have some examples of code of, of conduct in front of you all, so.
It's very brief. It's vague. It doesn't go into detail. It just, these are written for people to use common sense and to control themselves and be adults. But we don't have that sometimes, so.
So, um.
I'm just being blunt because no one's saying nothing about nothing and everybody wants to do things, but here we are and we're not doing nothing.
So I'll be blunt too. Um, we're going to only continue to get, if we're getting other cities examples, um, we're only going to get things that are vague. So if you guys do want to go into more specifics, unless you want me to write them, um, and come up with some things that might bother some of you, it's better, I think, for you all to just, to speak to them as well.
There's some specific things in the code of conduct for the city of Sherwood and I can give them to you and just put them on the board.
Let's do it.
We're not going to vote on them.
Let's do it.
Until later, so.
That's exactly it. I mean, this is, this is just a workshop. Exactly. Great.
Be honest with fellow counselor members, the public and others. Credit other people's contributions to moving our community's interests forward. Yeah, make fair and impartial judgments by avoiding relationships and transactions that give appearance for compromising objectivity. That means, um, that has something to do with special interest groups or whatever too, right? Reject gifts, services, or other special considerations that are given with the intent of influencing your vote. Protect confidential information. Use public resources such as staff, time and equipment, supplies or facilities only for city-related business. Doesn't need to be specified, not for personal interest. Review materials provided in advance of the meeting. Share substantive, uh, substantive information that is relevant to a matter under consideration from sources outside the public decision-making process with fellow counselors and staff. Some of these might have some crossover from what's already on the council rules, but that's okay. Um, I think it'd be okay to write down, if you disagree with something that's, uh, on the agenda, speak to it in the meeting.
Could we add professionally?
Yes.
Is that truck driver professionally or? Uh, office professional? Office professional is where we're at. Yeah.
Any other specifics people want to write down on the code of conduct part?
So council rules really, really impact how you all work with each other, how the public ends up interacting with staff, how you interact with the public, how Sweet Home is viewed, um, in a larger way. Um, I was hired to help promote Sweet Home, to get some of the things done, to build bridges with the community and with other agencies. Um, and I have been doing that and have actually excelled and exceeded that in many ways. Um, and sometimes council has actually made that task harder. And almost all of you have come to me and talked about wanting council rules modified, wanting an attendance policy, wanting, um, it to be clearer on what's accountable, wanting to be able to hold someone accountable. And even some of you who are expressing that you're having fewer, that you're not wanting it changed too much, have expressed privately to me wanting to be able to have some more authority over if somebody breaks one of those ethical rules or one of those, um, council rules. I think it's important for the leadership of Sweet Home, for the future, for our current staff, that we address this, um, a little bit more now. And I know you can ask for some examples and other things, but at the end of the day, other cities aren't going to have the exact same challenges that we have. So I do think if you want it to change, then we're going to have to make some decisions. If you don't and you're happy with status quo, then I don't think you should expect it to change in the future. So I'll just leave that, um, to you all. And then if there is something else that you would like to go ahead and discuss, we can. Um, but I do want to make sure you understand how much council behavior impacts the morale and, um, the future leadership of staff. And that it's a very challenging position to be in for all of you to have to make these decisions. But that is the role of a council member. So is there anything else you want to add or should we just try to do this at a later date?
Council feedback. Sounds like nobody's going to speak up, so we're going to close this meeting at 5:30.